Mr. Mayor, we, Mr. Miller here, maybe we can, maybe we can take, um, once we open the meeting, maybe we can get him towards the top and as we have to get some through some other things that we may have some questions about.
I don't mind.
After public participation, then, do you think?
Right after, right after public participation.
Good.
Thank you, guys.
We have everybody we need.
Heather here yet?
I don't quite see her yet.
We, we have a quorum, we can start, so she jumps on, we'll just note it.
Okay. She was just with us, I'm sure she'll be right with us now. I'd like to call the special school committee meeting to order. I'm sure the school committee meeting of July 19th, 2021. It is 5:19 PM. Could we have a roll call, please?
Okay, Ramon Diaz here. Diane Mayhew. Bo Sullivan. Cindy Sullivan.
Yes, here, present.
Heather Sullivan. Tim O'Connor.
Here.
Chairman Humison.
Here. All right, please show me the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation.
Under God.
Under God, indivisibly.
Liberty, justice.
Liberty and justice.
For all.
For all. Wow, that really, really messes you up when you're trying to say it.
We'll do better.
It's tough, you can only hear half. I know. I can't wait. That was not good.
Uh, two on the agenda is public participation excluding personnel. Anyone who would like to speak to the members of the school committee, you have three minutes, we need to have name and address, um, and I can't see everybody on the meeting in one screen, so just call and get your, get my attention and I'll be happy to recognize you. Anyone for public participation tonight? I do see that Heather has joined us at 5:20. Anyone else for, anyone for public participation? Okay, last call for public participation. If you want to speak, just speak up so I can recognize you. I don't see anyone, so let's move on. We'd like to take Peter Miller out of order. We'll do him, do him now, uh, before we approve the minutes of the last meeting.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to take item number six and, and move it under item number two.
Motion's made, any got any second?
Second.
Good. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, does it have to be a roll call? Oh, I forget.
It does.
We're meeting again. Sorry.
Tim made it and Cindy second, correct? Yeah.
Correct.
All right. All right. All right, Cindy Sullivan.
Yes.
Heather Sullivan.
Yes.
Okay. Ramon Diaz, yes, Diane May, uh, Tim O'Connor.
Yes.
Chairman Humison.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
All right, Mr. Miller, how are you?
I'm good, thank you for having me today, appreciate it.
Thanks, Pete.
Yep, so, um, I submitted a letter to Mayor Humison back in June, um, with a request to, um, ask the school committee to consider, uh, surplusing the 1.60 acres that are left over at Ashley Street School, uh, that are not, um, uh, not part of the park project, uh, of the park, uh, generally, uh, it's land controlled by the school committee. Uh, I think this is, uh, a conversation we, we all knew, um, was likely to occur at some point. Um, we have two, so the, the letter that I wrote says that we have two options, and we do, we have two options. Number one is very straightforward, however, uh, challenging, uh, in, in other ways where, um, for historic purposes, I can tell you, and I have a, a map if anybody wants to see it, I know I shared it with the, uh, with the mayor previously, but there are, um, a number of encumbrances on what are, what is parkland, uh, back as you know in the 1970s, um, the, uh, city put up a, a fence along the western edge of Cross Street Playground, uh, that abuts the, the neighbors on the backside of State Street. Um, that fence was placed on, uh, well into city land, about probably 25 or 30 feet into land that the city owned. Um, over the years, neighbors have put sheds, garages, uh, and in one instance, a pool on, on the city property. Um, we have, so, so there are encumbrances on what is supposed to be the, the parkland. Um, there's also on the, uh, on the entryway that, uh, to the parking lot by the ball field, uh, you know that there's that fence with a shed on the property that abuts, uh, next door, I think it's 11 Cross Street, and that, uh, that shed goes in by about six or eight feet as well. Um, so we have two, we have two options in order to satisfy, uh, the state and federal governments. Uh, number one would be to, uh, send a, uh, a demand letter to the neighbors to have those things moved, uh, or in some cases demolished, um, because they, they're on, uh, they're permanent structures that are on, uh, protected parkland. Uh, the second option is to, um, to redraw the, the, the protected parkland lines in a way that those encumbrances are no longer there. Uh, in order to do so, we would require, uh, the addition of, of more property to, um, to give us an equal split between, uh, what, what was protected and encumbered versus what is, um, the, um, what we actually have at this point in time. So, uh, there is a process that we would be required to undertake. Um, it's my, and this is, uh, this is really, I guess, a professional opinion, I think the, the smart and, and, and in some ways a political one. Um, the, the, the way for us to, um, to fix this problem, which was made, like I said, back in the 1970s, it's not something that happened in 2005, it's not something that happened in 2020, this is something that happened in 1970. Um, we would, it is my, my, uh, recommendation is to, um, since there is, uh, a small, there is still, uh, s- uh, school land there, but it's gotten to a point where it's small enough where it's unlikely that it would be of great value to a, a future project, that the best, uh, highest and best use of that property at this point would be to, uh, add that to the park, um, as we go forward. Uh, certainly as the Franklin Street Project moves forward, that's part of why we're thinking about it at this point in time. Uh, we, we would expect that for the next 30 years or more, uh, the, um, the elementary needs of, of the, the neighborhoods that, uh, that Ashley Street serves would be, uh, addressed by the Franklin Street School. Um, so I, I don't want to bore you with anymore that I think we all know what, where we're at, um, certainly we're all willing to, uh, entertain any questions anybody might have.
Are there any questions for Pete Miller? Mr. O'Connor?
Yeah, it's probably more, more comments, but may, may end up in a question, so I, I don't think going back to the homeowners and asking them to take a cool down or sheds down or garages down, um, is a reasonable or sensible thing to do. Um, this parcel of, first of all, Mr. Miller, the park is beautiful. Um, I've, I've been there a few times, it's just, uh, it's, it's in a great spot, it serves a lot of great needs, so to you and, and the group that helped put that together, it's, it's really a fantastic place, and I, I know, uh, there'll be some other improvements to it, but the parcel of land that's being addressed is, is, um, really kind of in an odd shape, right? It's off the parking, it seems to be off the parking lot, and I, you know, I'd, I'd ask the superintendent, I guess, a question for the superintendent, would there be any, any, any reason or need to, to consider building anything on there that you're aware of, and to just the maintenance of it, and, and, um, uh, we're responsible for that, I'm, I'm expecting at this point, and, um, you know, that, it's, it's maybe, maybe not being maintained as, 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 as well as it could, but just any comments from you?
I would say that I don't see any project that we would have that would fit on that part, that size parcel of it anymore. So, and, in, in regard to the maintenance, I mean, it is one additional area where we do have to maintain at a time when we're down maintenance staff. But, you know, just to comment on those two pieces, but I don't see us being able to do anything with that parcel, if it's 1.6 acres, I mean, that's not very large. And the Franklin Avenue School is moving forward at, at this time, um, and that makes a lot of sense, so I would not object to this happening.
Yeah, thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Cindy Sullivan, yes, please.
So, are we, so I, I didn't see the map, and this is the first I'm kind of hearing about this. Um, so is it, it's not the whole thing where the parking lot is, where Ashley Street School was, it's a different part?
No, this is, this, we're, we're actually, we're talking about the full 1.6 acres that is school department property. So back in February, we came in and we asked for a license, and you were gracious enough to offer it to us, and that was for about a little bit, probably right around a half an acre, uh, is what the parking lot is, it's, I think it's about point, point six, something like that is what we built the parking lot on, and, uh, that, that's been appreciated, certainly. Um, that is, that remains school property, even though we've built it into a parking lot that serves primarily the park, uh, but we, we're talking here, we are talking about the full 1.6, the full, uh, threshold of, of what, where the Ashley Street School was.
Okay. I, I agree with Tim, I don't think we go back 50 years, I don't think that's fair. Um, however, are they paying ta, are they gonna be paying taxes on that property now? Are you gonna be, like, I, I mean, that's a city thing, not a school committee thing, but just to, if you're redrawing it, is that gonna then become their actual property?
So we'll have, there's, there's two, two portions to that, number one, we, so we, the, the redrawing of the, uh, of the conservation restriction or of the park restriction is separate from our fee ownership of the property. So, is, at this point, the thought is that we would, our, our primary and our immediate need is to redraw the, uh, the lines, uh, for the, the protected portion of the property without addressing the, the fee ownership. So, um, at this point in time, we don't have a, a, a plan yet to, to offer those for sale, however, we would be, have the ability, uh, I mean, after going through, uh, the, the city council or anybody else, we would have the, the opportunity to offer those for sale to abutters if it was something that they decided they wanted, um, but, but we wouldn't, we wouldn't be demanding that, so no, there would be no change to what they're paying their prop, what they're paying property taxes on. They would still be encroaching on municipal land, but it wouldn't be on protected parkland.
Okay, perfect, I'm in support of it.
That's the difference.
Yeah.
Yep, gotcha.
All right.
Other questions for Pete Miller?
Except, can you guys really read this map? Because I, I even have a strong pair of glasses on, I still can't read it.
Well, the parcels essentially the footprint of the old school building and the park.
No, 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 I, I agree, I, I don't think we need to go back and take things from people, um, and now, the way you just described it, um, I understand one's protected and one is municipality, I, 100%.
Okay.
Yeah, it's almost harder to do things on parkland even than it is to do things on municipal land.
As we've. It exactly is, we learned that the hard way, yeah.
Um, are we looking for a roll call for this then, Tim?
Yeah, we're gonna have to, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, declare that land 1.6 acres at the former Ashley Street School as surplus, uh, and cede it to, to the, the city for the parks.
Do I have a second?
Second, Tim, how is it reading?
Yeah, I'm confused.
It's, it's to, it's to declare the land as surplus.
And then the city, yeah, then the, the city council makes the, the, uh, the, the next step in the determination as to, it will go to the city, and the city would assign it to the Parks Department.
Okay.
Okay, I didn't understand, I'm like, all right, so yeah, I'll second it, and, all right, now that makes more sense.
Any further discussion? Anyone? Okay, seeing none, roll call, please.
Did we lose Ray?
Oh, I think Ray's on mute.
Oh, no wonder. Okay. All right, um, Cindy Sullivan.
Yes.
Okay. Heather Sullivan.
Yes.
Ramon Diaz, yes. Tim O'Connor.
Yes.
Chairman Humison.
Yes. And the motion passes. Thank you, Pete.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller, good luck with that.
Thank you.
Cross street people will be happy.
Yeah, anybody who hasn't had a chance to see the park, it's absolutely beautiful.
Yeah, it really is. Came out amazing.
The All Abilities Playground's phenomenal, too. There's some shitty spots to sit on, on a hot summer day, if you're looking at kids, you can get in the shade, so enjoy it.
Thank you very much, take care.
Thanks, Peter.
Thanks, P, thanks, PJ.
Let's return to item number three on the agenda, which is the approval of the regular school committee meeting minutes of June 21st, 2021.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular school committee meeting minutes of June 21st, 2021.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, are there any changes or corrections to the minutes?
Let me just ask, was Cindy at that meeting?
No, I was not at that meeting.
Do you wanna, do we wanna just table this one so that we have at least Bo and Diane, one of the two of them, because I don't want to get into that, it, there's no rush.
It's just the minutes, we can.
This, and if we have, we can, I said, I have a, we, we, I'd like to make a motion to table this.
Table what?
We can just ask Tim to withdraw his motion, and we could take it up at the next meeting.
Yep.
If you want to do that, that way we don't run the risk of.
Yeah, I think it's, there's no rush.
Having enough votes.
Heather, this, you know why we're doing it?
There's not, you can't.
What are you, what are you going back on, the one we just voted on?
No, no, no.
The one that we're, we're, that's on the floor right now, we don't, we, we've, we've got three yeses and we'd have two abstains.
Okay, yep.
So, we're gonna need a, we're, we're gonna need a quorum, um, so we'll just take it up at our next meeting, so I'd like to make a motion to withdraw, um, my motion that's currently on the floor.
Second.
Can we have a?
I think you just have to withdraw it.
I'm withdrawing it.
Yeah.
All right, in a quick moment of discussion, we need these minutes approved to send to the state for the virtual school, because it was at that meeting that you voted in affirmation, so I'm not sure when we can have the next meeting for that vote, but it needs to be, rather soon.
Stefan, do you know the answer to our question, though, can you, um, we weren't clear about, you know, members who weren't at the meeting can't vote?
Right, they would have to.
Have to be majority of people who are there?
Yeah, there's nothing we can do, because we don't have, two of the people weren't at the meeting, right? We don't have four votes of people that were at the meeting. So I don't know if that would pass the muster to the state anyway, I'm just saying that we have to have a quick meeting to approve those minutes, uh, in very near future.
Well, we can, we can do it now and see, and you can check with Russell, then if we have to meet again, we need to go. But if, if Russell says that's good enough, then we're good. What's that?
We already.
He just withdrew his motion, he didn't.
Yeah, there hasn't been many votes, just a motion made and withdrawn, you can always make another one, or someone else can make it. Better, better save and vote on it, and then see if, uh, if it is accepted.
I will make a motion to approve the regular school committee meeting minutes of June 21st, 2021.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded.
All right. We'll call Ramon Diaz abstain. Cindy Sullivan.
Abstain.
Heather Sullivan.
Yes.
Tim O'Connor.
Yes.
Chairman Humison.
Yes.
Okay, so.
Thank you, we'll try with that.
We think, we did, we think the most, yeah, so find out from Russell if that's okay, if it's not, then we'll need to meet again.
All right.
Just to prove that.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay.
And speaking of Russell, item number four.
I'd like to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agreement from professional legal services with Dupre Law Offices effective July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022, at a flat rate of $2,600 per month, and authorize the mayor to sign on behalf of the committee.
Second.
Motion's been made, uh, by Mr. Diaz, seconded by Mr. O'Connor. Any, uh, discussion? Seeing none.
I like the job they're doing.
Good.
Cindy Sullivan.
Yes.
Heather Sullivan.
Yes.
Ramon Diaz, yes, Tim O'Connor.
Yes.
Chairman Humison.
Yes. Motion passes. Item number five.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Westfield Fire Department's request to use the two school-owned homes located at 129 and 131 Franklin Street for non-destructive training.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion or questions?
Mr. Superintendent, do you just want to maybe give a, a brief, uh, description for those who may be tuning in or listening and may not know what this is intended for?
Sure, but Cindy had her hand up, I don't know if you want to ask Cindy before I explain.
Well, no, you can explain, and that'll probably answer my question.
Okay, so these, these are the two homes that have been purchased by the city of Westfield to be, uh, torn down for the construction of the new, uh, elementary school on Franklin Avenue, so, um, those purchases were completed on June 30th, uh, the second house, it became ours. Chief Eggloff from the fire department reached out to me to inquire if they were able to use this, um, to do some training, and I immediately, uh, I spoke, I spoke to Shannon about it and to Tammy Teft, and we got, uh, the clearance from Tammy as long as certain conditions were met, um, including waiting till June 30th, uh, but, um, so they're going to go in and do some training before we tear the houses down, now the RFPs to tear these houses down hasn't gone out yet, it is, it will be prepared shortly, so it's, this won't be for a long time, but if it assists the fire department in training for potential disasters that they may face, I certainly am in support of doing this. I know that they also have done this, by the way, with houses the city purchased at the airport, for example, so there is a precedent for this as well.
Does that answer any questions?
Yeah, my, my question was more of, it's not gonna delay our process of tearing it down at all, I'm sorry, my dog is barking, um, so, and, and are they gonna be doing any, uh, burning of it, or is it just training inside?
Training inside.
Okay. So it wouldn't help with the demolition of it at all?
No.
Also gonna be cheaper. There's less to pick up, right?
Yeah.
Well, we can always ask.
None destructive.
There's probably some EPA, yeah, some.
Gotcha.
Probably some EPA rule against that, you know?
Hey, we can ask, we can try. No, I think, and if it gives them the opportunity to, to train at no expense, then that's great, it's perfect.
Yeah.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yeah, two, two things, one, um, it's city property or school apartment property, as far as owner, ownership of the homes?
The school department owns the homes.
Right, we just, right.
We own the.
Okay, and, and, um, I, I just think it's, it's great, uh, opportunity, we, we don't often ha- have an opportunity like this, I'm sure, to, to assist the fire department training on, you know, real houses upstairs, downstairs, and basements, and, um, um, I just think it would be a, a, a real help to them to get some of that live training, so to speak.
Yep.
I did, and there's, we wouldn't be responsible, Mr. Superintendent, for any, any safety in, inside, if there's any injuries or anything, um, we, we just want to make sure that we're not, would be held responsible for that.
I think, did you get?
Right, we wouldn't be responsible, and I did, I did run it all through the legal department, I mean, they asked to ensure that it would be only, um, city personnel that are, um, taking part in this training, and that was put in the letter, and, and I have been assured that it will.
All right, thanks.
Okay, perfect.
Any other questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Cindy Sullivan.
Yes.
Heather Sullivan.
Yes.
Ramon Diaz, yes. Tim O'Connor.
Yes.
Did I miss it?
He said yes.
Tim O'Connor?
Yes.
I didn't hear him. Okay. Chairman Humison.
Yes. And the motion passes. Item number seven.
Number seven.
I, I'd like to make a motion, uh, to amend, uh, the superintendent's contract to reflect a year three of his contract, uh, to be, uh, annual income set at 165,000 for his third and final year of the three-year contract.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Mr. O'Connor?
Yeah, so just, uh, to make the public aware and, and other, other individuals, this is, uh, not a, a, a new issue or discussion, we've been in discussion with the superintendent for over a year and a half, uh, and have talked about the third year of his contract for some time, and just to put things into a little bit of perspective, um, I just want to give this group an understanding of, of the, some of the salaries, uh, across the state, out of the 217, uh, towns or cities reporting, uh, Superintendent Zaporowski's salary ranks at 172nd, and that is on the low side, not on the high side. Um, and based on the number of students in the district, we took the, 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 the schools, the 10 schools nearest Westfield number, um, and, and the superintendent's salary was, was well below the average of, of all those schools, uh, across the, across the, the state, the average salary's 178,000, and the average enrollment is 3,200, Westfield's, uh, enrollment's around 5,200, and, uh, the superintendent's salary's at 160,000 for the third year, so we'd like to move that to 165,000 effective July 1st, 2021.
Any other comments? Heather, go ahead.
And I, I feel very strongly about doing this and, and, and putting this forward, and, um, especially when we see the kind of year we came out of, but also, um, the, uh, his evaluation strongly supports exactly how we're feeling about, um, how he's doing for work with us, for us, so, sorry, guys, I'm just a little out of it today, so anyway, um, so I just want to say thank you to the superintendent, because, um, a job well done, and, um, but again, we reflected our, how we felt about how he was doing his job in the evaluations, and I think this is, um, something that we should absolutely, uh, be happy to do.
Thank you, Heather, any other comments? All right, seeing none. Oh, gorgeous.
I'm sorry, um, I, I concur with, I don't repeat what someone else has already said, but, um, it, it's not just the past year of COVID, I want to, to make that clear, that, um, if you look at the picture of the last five years, um, you know, Stefan has been a leader, um, in the district and in the city, and I think he really deserves, um, a better average than what is coming out with it right now, so, um, I, I appreciate him coming to us, asking for this quite a while ago, and we did put it off because of COVID, um, and he was patient with that, and we want him to remain in our district based on the, uh, evaluation, um, like Ms. Sullivan said, on June 21st, uh, he received very high marks, and he's a very hard worker and a great leader in our city, and I think that needs to be commended, so I look forward to this.
And community.
And community, yep.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Ready, go ahead.
I'd like to, yeah, thanks, I just like that, and the morale and the district and the leadership that he's provided have, if, if you knew where we were right before he came on board to where we are now, it's just like night and day, and we appreciate, and this last year of COVID has been even more challenging, and I think as a district, we've handled it much, much better under his leadership than some of the other surrounding districts, so I think we should be, it should be commended. So I think we should be, it should be commended for that. And, and we appreciate the work you're doing, Stefan. So, thank you.
Thank you all for that.
All right, seeing no other comments, let's move to a roll call.
Heather Sullivan.
Yes.
Ramon Diaz, yes. Cindy Sullivan.
Yes, yes.
Tim O, Tim O'Connor.
Yes.
Chairman Humison.
Yes. The motion passes.
Motion passes.
Item number eight.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the following gifts donations, uh, donated to Munger Hill Elementary School from Stop &amp; Shop Rewards in the amount of $1,189.28 from Retail Business Services to be used in the Educational Purposes Gift Account. A donated Westfield Intermediate School from Stop &amp; Shop Rewards in the amount of $602.70 for Retail Business Services to be used in the Educational Purposes Gift Account. And donated to Westfield Intermediate School from Box Tops for Education, $7.20 to be used in the Educational Purposes Gift Account.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any other discussion?
Just, uh, we appreciate, uh, the support, uh, from the community and, and the businesses.
Yeah. $1,100.
Yeah, someone's doing some shopping.
Sign up for those points.
All right, seeing no other comments. Roll call. Yeah, we have to accept this. Roll call, please.
Yeah, Ramon Diaz, yes. Cindy Sullivan.
Yes.
Heather Sullivan.
Yes.
Tim O'Connor.
Yes.
Chairman Humison.
Yes. And the motion passes.
I'd like to make a motion to, yeah, I'd like to make a motion to accept the Summer Accelerated Academies grant in the amount of $60,106.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Discussion.
I've got a question.
Here.
Go right.
Yes, okay, um, is, is there any staff being hired, like, as a result of this? Is there, are there people impacts to this, or is this materials? And if so, are this just summer positions?
Yeah, they're just summer positions, and they're happening at the, at Franklin Ave. And they're happening at the middle school for grades eight and 10. Uh, it is a grant that was offered by the state for, it's a one-week academy. Um, I believe it's the third week of August for students. And it's no charge to them, and the principals are identifying students who need, who really ought to attend. Um, so it's not going to affect our staffing, although I don't believe we've hired staff for those positions just yet, but we are, we have, we're working on that, or filling positions.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay.
It's just to focus on ELA and math, by the way. Particularly math.
Uh, does there need to be a roll call on this?
Yes, roll call on all of them. Yeah.
Individually, okay.
Okay, uh, Cindy Sullivan.
Yes.
Heather Sullivan.
Yes.
Ramon Diaz, yes. Tim O'Connor.
Yes.
Chairman Humison.
Yes.
Motion. Motion passes. I'd like to make a motion to accept the Career Technical Initiative Planning Grant in the amount of $3,559.50.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Cindy Sullivan.
Yes.
Heather Sullivan.
Yes.
Ramon Diaz, yes. Tim O'Connor.
Yes.
Chairman Humison.
Yes. The motion passes.
Motion. I'd like to make a motion to accept the Mass Life Sciences Center STEM Equipment Grant in the amount of $194,742.
Second.
Wow.
Wow.
Yeah, that's great. Um, motion is made and seconded. Any discussion or questions?
Uh, could, Stefan, could you talk about what this is going to be used? Stefan, could you talk about what this is going to be used for?
Well, I'm actually going to ask, yes, but I'm going to ask Joanne, who joined us tonight, uh, our grants, uh, manager, business analyst, to talk about it. But I will tell you that this, this funding is going to Westfield High School, Westfield Technical Academy, and Westfield Middle School. Joanne?
Okay, so this grant, like Stefan mentioned, is benefiting all three schools. Um, the middle school will be receiving 40,000. Um, the high school, 82.7, and WTA, about 72,300. And what this grant does is it buys equipment for all of our life science programs. Um, so we worked, um, very closely with Lauren Catigan, the science supervisor. And she worked with her teachers to kind of see what was definitely needed to really expand those programs and to get the kids involved. Um, so this grant will provide a lot of the equipment that's needed in all three of those schools.
Amazing.
Great job.
Some street friends, too. Um, so it's, it's great, it's, it's a great, great job. And I want to shout out Joanne and Laura as well, because, actually, and Joanne, there's been a lot of grants sent here. I know you have your, you have had your hand in it, so keep up the good work.
Thank you.
That's awesome, Joanne. I think you did a great, I mean, that's just unbelievable. But was there a common, um, thread of what the schools needed? Was there something that they all, you know, were in desperate need of that they're getting?
There wasn't anything, one specific, um, item. There's a lot of, um, the, the, there's like three spreadsheets for the, the schools on what specific items they wanted or needed. Um, a lot of it is equipment in their labs for, like, the chemistry lab.
That's what I was wondering, yeah.
There's different things. There's like a 3D printer at one of the schools. There's, the list just goes, I mean, it goes on and on.
Yeah, no, I was just wondering if anything stood out. My, in particular, I was wondering for lab equipment. You know, um, just because I know back, way back when, uh, that was a problem or an issue at the high school. Yeah, you know, but I was wondering if it was going to be for labs.
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, even there's like skeletons and torsos.
Yeah, exactly, right.
Like all of that stuff.
Oh, cool. All right. All right. Thank you again.
Any other comments? Seeing none. A roll call, please.
Cindy Sullivan.
Yes.
Heather Sullivan.
Yes.
Ramon Diaz, yes. Tim O'Connor.
Yes.
Chairman Humison.
Yes. And motion passes.
Motion to accept the New England Dairy, I'd like to make a motion to accept the New England Dairy Grant in the amount of $4,689.
Second.
Ray, don't you mean you'd like to move a motion? Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
It took a second.
Done joke. Thanks very much. Um, any comments besides how bad that?
I thought it was funny.
Uh, any other comments or questions? Okay, seeing none. Roll call, please.
Heather Sullivan.
Yes.
Right, Ramon Diaz, yes. Cindy Sullivan.
Yes.
Tim O'Connor.
Yes.
Chairman Humison.
Yes. Motion passes.
Right. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to accept the pre-K dash three Remote Learning Partnership Grant in the amount of $10,000.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Ramon Diaz, yes. Cindy Sullivan.
Yes.
Heather Sullivan.
Yes.
Tim O'Connor.
Yes.
Chairman Humison.
Yes. And the motion passes.
Motion passes.
Is there an eight C?
There is other, um, and I only have one quick update, and I don't, it's just more of a midsummer update. I, I think people are paying attention to what's happening nationwide. We're starting to see another uptick in, in cases of COVID. In some cases, we're seeing back, it's unvaccinated people, uh, by the lot, most of the cases, I should say. Uh, and so the CDC has recommended that, uh, when school opens, that, uh, students who are unvaccinated remain masked, that's 12 and under. And any staff who are unvaccinated would be have to, or any adults would have to wear a mask. Now, that's obviously difficult to enforce. And so, uh, we had our superintendent's conference last week, and the commissioner said they're going to be issuing guidance, they're working with Mass DPH now, issuing guidance for the fall, where you're going to receive it very late in July or very early in August. Uh, we are currently working on our back-to-school plan, and we actually made, made out this morning. And, um, you know, we, we are going, that we're developing a plan that is going to effectively prepare for any scenario again, because it is a possibility. And I think we have to be prepared for having to go remote, Adam, uh, i- if this doesn't go away. And I think we have to prepare for hybrid. And I think, you know, right now, we are preparing for fully in-person. First day of school is, is, school's open August 30th, that's what we're preparing for. Um, but again, if you're just paying attention, things are, you know, we're even seeing a slight uptick locally. Um, so we'll update, uh, parents, and of course, the school committee and all the staff as soon as we have more information from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education.
Heather.
Heather, you're on mute.
Sorry, I had to reprimand my son first. Um, are these people, you know, I'm a little confused with the stories I'm hearing. So, but are these people getting, who are testing positive, have they been vaccinated?
The vast majority have not. There are some that are vaccinated, that are testing positive as well.
Okay.
Five of six members of the New York Yankees, for example, this past weekend.
Right. But they're not showing symptoms.
Right. The concern, I think, that people are, is again, for this, and I'm hearing the vaccine for 12 and under, if, you know, maybe will be available in December.
I just, I, I really hope people decide to get this, because it, you know, we're trying to do our part so these kids can come back to school and so that we can all, you know, you know, have a life of normalcy somewhat, but, you know, that would, I would hate to go back to where we were.
And I don't think that's going to happen, but we have to submit a back-to-school plan to the state again. So we're, we're really going to just take what we had and retool it, fix the, the shortcomings that we knew we, we had last year. Uh, and just be prepared for any, any event. I think that's the wisest thing to do.
It is the wisest thing to do, and.
Yeah, and once again, our school district is at the mercy of what we're being told by the State Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, the State Department of Public Health, the CDC at the federal level. Um, you know, so we are, we, we have to follow the regulations that we're put under, uh, sometimes whether we want to or not. I promised a friend that I would use every opportunity I had just to remind people that, you know, vaccines are available, e- even in Westfield now, pretty much at every pharmacy, every doctor's office, um, and there are even certain pop-up pharmacy, uh, pop-up vaccine clinics that happen from time to time. There's no shortage of the vaccine. You can get it anywhere you want, uh, at any time. And in most cases, for free, if you have insurance. And if you don't have insurance, there's other opportunities to get it. So, you know, if you are inclined to get the vaccine, uh, and even if you're not, we urge you to do it, because it will, it will, it will prevent from causing a lot of problems that everybody else has to deal with, uh, both from our healthcare system to our educational system, uh, as well as the convenience of transportation and everything else. So please take the opportunity, which now are many, to get the vaccine.
Agreed.
Well, people are smart enough to make that decision for themselves. I do not believe in government mandates. I don't think it's right for us to tell people what to do. But in many cases, I think it's the right thing to do. I vaccinated myself, got vaccinated, so, um, and my wife has as well. That's a decision we made for our family. We hope other people will do that as well.
I agree.
Thank you. I agree, I think it protects the, the under 12, you know, if the adults are vaccinated. It will help protect the younger kids.
Right. So you're welcome to all those people. Just not to get vaccinated, we're doing our part.
Stefan, anything else?
That's all I have for, for today.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, and I'm reminded, I was just going to say about the same thing, about, uh, the vaccines. We've, um, the, the clinic that the city of Westfield was involved in, uh, at the Big E has closed now. We were involved with the towns of West Springfield and Agawam and Southwick, as well as the Sheriff's Department. Uh, so we had got together as a, as a group to put a vaccine clinic on at the Big E. Um, now that vaccines are so readily available, that clinic is closed, just like I believe the other state, uh, clinic out at, um, uh, Eastfield Mall is now closed. Um, because there's, again, no shortage of vaccine available in pretty much every city in town that has a pharmacy of its own. So, um, we'd like to encourage people to take advantage of that and get vaccinated. Um, I do check in with Base State Noble Hospital as part of my mayor's job. And, you know, they're telling us that their numbers are still very low. We don't see a lot of people, uh, in the hospital with, with COVID, and that's great. That's what we would expect, but we don't want to see those numbers grow, because that triggers other things and encourages, you know, like I said, the powers that be above us to start cracking down again, and we don't want that to happen. Uh, we don't want to be impacted at the school department level or at the city level. Um, and so I encourage people to get that, the vaccine. Um, uh, the budget is, process is complete. I think members of the school committee know that. Thank you for, um, your efforts and your help going through that. Uh, we have a school building committee tomorrow. Uh, some members of the school building, uh, committee will be meeting at 5 o'clock tomorrow afternoon, um, for our, uh, update with, um, uh, with P3 and our, our contractors. And, uh, um, that process, as Stefan said, is going very, very well. Uh, I'm very happy that we finally own the two buildings. And now that parcel on Franklin Avenue and Franklin Street will be, um, pretty much wide open and clean for us to build, uh, the school, uh, the new school. So that gives it much more space. And, uh, there's even been already some suggestions on some of the schematic drawings on how to improve the, the layout based on the new space that we have available. Finally, I'll mention this, I was going to talk about fireworks for a second, because it actually involves our schools. Um, because of COVID, the governor was expected not to reduce or release the restrictions until August 2nd. He did so in May, at the end of May, right before Memorial Day. So, um, that gave, uh, cities and towns an opportunity to have outdoor events and large gatherings. Some communities like Springfield and Chickabee did decide to go ahead with, um, fireworks on July 4th or Independence Day weekend. We in Westfield decided to hold off, and we've decided now to partner with Westfield on weekends and do our fireworks in the fall as part of, of the city's Pumpkin Fest activities. So details are still being worked out as far as the actual date. But as far as the location, we are still up in the air. Um, as you know, there, there's construction behind the Boys and Girls Club, which is where we've typically been firing off our fireworks, uh, exhibits, is behind, um, Westfield Middle School and the Boys and Girls Club. We are hopeful that the fire marshal will, will approve the site, um, behind the, the club, even with the new building being built there. Um, there needs to be a zone of exclusion from where they fire off the fireworks, so that nothing that comes down lands on anything, including a new building. I'm sure the Boys and Girls Club is very happy that we didn't burn down their, their new building. Um, so we're hoping to get that approved. Kids are going to be back, the building will be completed before, uh, the end of August, because kids have to be back in school for September. Um, if that doesn't work out, we're, we may have to ask about using the high school field. So we're still kind of up in the air with that, still trying to figure out, um, exactly where we'll be able to do, uh, our fireworks. But we do anticipate doing them as part of Pumpkin Fest. And we would like to make sure that, uh, you know, people know that we are going to be doing fireworks. So just hold off till the fall. The benefit of doing them in the fall, obviously, is it's cheaper, because you're not competing against other towns. Uh, you can also do them earlier, like around 8:30, as opposed to 9:30 in the summertime. Um, so that's a better thing for everybody. And, uh, stay tuned, uh, the Westfield, city of Westfield website will have information about it, as with the local papers. Um, but they're going to be behind one school or the other, I would expect, uh, the two best locations. Um, but they're going to be behind one school or the other. I would expect, uh, the two best locations in the city are either behind the high school or behind the Westfield Middle School. So, and I'd like to keep them wherever they are because it's, uh, it's always hard to go to another spot and then move back to the old spot. So my choice would be to do them right behind the Boys and Girls Club and the middle school. I think that's it. Any questions for me? Okay. Thank you. Uh, number 10, school committee update. Seeing none, number 11, items for referral to subcommittees. Seeing none, number 12, old business. Seeing none, item 13, subcommittee reports and recommendations. I love it when the meetings go this fast. I do know we have business center item number 14, other items not reasonably anticipated 48 hours prior to the meeting. And that is the acceptance of the Elementary and Secondary Education Emergency Relief Esser Two Funds. Uh, who's prepared to make the motion?
I'd like to make a motion to accept, uh, the Elementary and Secondary Education Emergency Relief, that's Esser Two Funds, uh, in, in the funds grant in the amount of $4,808,471.
Second.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded by Cindy Sullivan, made by Tim O'Connor, seconded by Cindy Sullivan. Any discussion?
Shannon, or, um,
Stefan, okay.
I at least just want to, uh, one, thanks Shannon for her effort on this Esser grant, the, the first one, the second one, I, they have been a tremendous time consuming. Esser three is going to be even twice as much as work as this one was. Uh, some of the hot items on this obviously are the additional counselors that we have coming into our schools next year. Um, the virtual school and there's also some, um, HVAC improvements, but Shannon, I don't know if you want to add anything, but I just, Shannon, nice job with this. Thank you for getting it in and getting it done. I know it was a lot of work.
Thank you. Yeah. So I think Stefan Carter was on the virtual school. We do have a health supervisor position on here as well. Um, and the supervisor of counseling and social emotional learning is on, on this grant too. Um, yes, and then the HVAC work, the control work that has been needed for quite some time, actually just got final approval this afternoon. So it's very exciting that we're going to be able to get that done.
And I just ask, uh, yeah, um, because we've run into this before, when I first came on the school committee, there was, there was some grants that came that were title five or, and we had, we were getting like $2 million a year for three years for funding for certain positions. One of the reasons I always ask, because we got burnt that year and it looked like our, like our, um, budget shot up when it didn't. So I just, when we're looking at these positions that are funded by grants, particularly grants that we know are going to run out like this one, we just need to be really, really careful about these positions are here while the grant is here. If they're really necessary, we need to build them in the budget. It's definitely necessary because kids coming back from COVID are going to have many emotional issues. We see it in the schools. We saw it this year and we just got to get a taste of it toward the end of the year. So I understand that this is, these positions are critical. That's what this funding is for. If we're going to need the fundness beyond that, we need to start preparing for that. And for the, for the years that this grant runs out, because when, when we talk positions, we need to make sure that the money's there. If we're planning on getting rid of these positions at the end of this grant funding, we just need to make sure that we're clear with the employees that get hired under this grant. So that there's no question about what's going on and we're not, you know, it's just clear. I just want to make sure we're upfront with everyone involved.
Agreed, right. And, and the thing is, is we also know in terms of the counselors, for example, we're going to have some retirements coming up. And so some of those positions would fall into the LEA side anyway because of that. Uh, but we are being transparent.
Right.
The grant. For three years.
Thank you, because I know we ran into some problems that issue that year.
Cindy.
So, um, to Ray's point, when you're hiring for these grant positions, are you hiring specific people for these granted positions or do they then go into the union? And that's how, um, layoffs would happen or anything like that?
They do fall into the union. Their unit, uh, their unit A, the, the pre-school adjustment counselors, for example, are in unit A.
Right. So, so that's where it gets tricky, Ray, with, it is a grant funded position, but the person who ends up in the position in a few years might not be the person that was originally hired for that position. So that, that's where, that's where it gets really tricky. And I agree with you that looking ahead and seeing if we need the positions in the future rather than in that year is helpful. And I, I, I'm confident we will do that this time, but that's the trouble with grant funded money. And when you're working with unions, because it, it does have to go through our regular process, um, when an, uh, you know, an other, not, if you're not working with, with unions necessarily, and I'm not, this is not a slam to the union. I'm just explaining the process. That if you're hiring someone, you say this is a grant funded position, when it ends, i- it could end. But that's not how it works with us. So it, it'll look like we're either increasing our budget or laying off a bunch of people and the grant gets lost in the mix. I just want to make that point.
No, no. I would, I'd like to, you know, like, I don't know if there's something that's in the contract or something we can put in the union contract that says, these people are hired with these positions and, you know, I, I don't know. It's just, to your point, I think, I think we just need to get better at that. Based on what I saw when I first came on and it, that's every time I see a grant, which is why I asked in the, the question earlier about the 60,000 that we were getting, but those are only summer positions, that we just have to be careful that we say these positions are being hired for that grant. And when that grant goes away, that position goes away, it shouldn't be back in a pool because it's unfair to everybody that was already there. So I just, we've got to figure something out, but, but with this much money and that many positions, we just need to put it at the forefront of our minds. It's all, thank you.
I agree. Yeah.
The problem with every grant is it does come with strings and we have to decide before, apply for it that, you know, are the strings worth it? And in some cases, in this case especially, we decided that it was.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Right. And I agree.
Definitely is.
A hundred percent necessary and I agree. I just think it gets, and not intentionally, but it gets lost at two years or three years later when the grant money is running out and then we're talking about people and not positions and because it's people attached to them, that's what gets hard.
Yeah.
That's all.
Cool beans.
Other comments? Okay, seeing none, roll call, please.
Cindy Sullivan.
Yes.
Heather Sullivan.
Yes.
Ramon Diaz, yes. Tim O'Connor.
Yes. Yes.
Tim O'Connor, did I miss it?
No, he said yes.
He said yes three times.
Okay. Okay.
He's voted.
I don't know why I'm having a problem. Yeah, I know. I'm sorry. Uh, Chairman Hummerson.
Uh, yes. And that motion passes. Uh, item number 15, next regular school committee meeting is to be determined.
Right.
Do we have a date?
Not yet. Um, we have to revote on that.
We may need to look into, yeah.
Be very soon.
Okay. All right, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. It's six eighteen PM. Roll call, please.
Cindy Sullivan.
Yes.
Heather Sullivan.
Yes.
Ramon Diaz, yes. Tim O'Connor.
Yes.
Okay. Chairman Hummerson.
Yes.
Okay.
Meeting is adjourned. We'll be in touch soon.
Have a good night, everybody.
Have a great night.